What? Okay, Liberty, we're gonna go live now. Three, two, three, two, one.
Good evening, this is our Kettering Workshop for December the eighth. And we'll go ahead and have Mr. Sweeterman begin.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, we're starting a little early tonight because we have the 2021 budget presentation as a part of our workshop this evening. Before I turn it over to Kelly and Nancy, I just want to say thank you to Kelly and Nancy for all their efforts that they put on over the last several months to get this budget together. I'd also like to thank all of our directors, many of whom are joining us tonight. They did an outstanding job of working with our finance department and city administration to get to this point tonight in very difficult situations, to present a budget to you that we think meets the needs of our citizens, but also is respectful of the current economic climate that we're in. So just wanted to say that first, and then from a logistics standpoint, I will turn it over to Kelly. She'll go through the normal general feature for us. Of course, you can ask questions as we go. We're at the end. Then we'll take a couple minute break and then resume regular workshop activity after the budget presentation. So with that, I will turn it over to Kelly.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Steve Burke Strasser is my technical assistant today and is going to be bringing up the slideshow here shortly. We always start out with some humor. I'm not hearing a lot of laughter, but
I like it.
Bruce always enjoys it.
Yeah, well.
So, so let's get started here on the page that says 2021 Budget Highlights. What we're going to do is just give you just a taste of what we're going to be talking about in this presentation. So I want to just start out with a few highlights that we will delve in deeper as we go. The first point is that our general fund operating revenues cover our operating expenditures. So this is a very important goal for us. For 2020, our estimated operating margin is $1,078,830. For 2021, we're budgeting an operating margin of $927,500. This year, we do have some one-time receipts, some specifically related to the COVID-19 pandemic. The first I'd like to talk about is the Bureau of Workers' Compensation dividends. We received four dividends or rebates totaling $2 million. The last dividend to be received in December is at the urging of Governor DeWine, and that will be $1.1 million. We also received CARES Act funding primarily to be used for public safety personnel, and this is $3.2 million. We received CARES Act for CBPG programs of just shy of $600,000. And we are submitting an application for FEMA funding. This will be about between $100 and $150,000 in grant funding, and this is a 75% grant with a 25% city match. We'll be talking about income tax revenues.
Kelly, can I, this, Tony, can I ask a question on that, that, that area? This five, this is 5.9 million in 2020. Is that in the, is that baked into the operating margin calculation then?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
But not the, not the CBPG portion, though. Because that is separate from our operating margin. That's its own set of funding.
5.3 million is, is in that. This year's
Yes.
Is this same amount or similar gonna be in the 2021 budget then?
We will not be counting on any additional CARES Act funding or Bureau of Workers' Compensation funding for next year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll be moving on, then we'll be talking about income tax revenues. Our 2020 original budget was $52.3 million. Our estimate is now $49.2 million. And our 2021 budget is $47.9 million. And we'll be talking in more detail about that when we look at our income tax slide. For personnel, we have a decrease in our staffing levels in next year's budget. Our full-time personnel, we're showing a decrease of 14.8 full-time equivalents. And in part-time personnel, we are decreasing 19.8 full-time equivalents. And the full-time equivalent is 2,080 hours. So I'll cover more details in the next few slides. Our operating expenditures excluding personnel is actually less than last year's budget. So this means that our budgets will be very tight, and we may not have the level of under-spending that we typically see. Our capital improvements for next year are budgeted at $12.5 million. And finally, we'll be looking at our general fund balance. The ending balance for 2020 is estimated to increase $1.1 million, and we'll see a decrease of $2.3 million in 2021. So Steve, if you want to go to the next slide, I always show the slide so you have a picture of the total city because we focus so much on our general fund. Of course, that's because the general fund is what we have available to spend. But you want to look at all of our funds as well. We'll start off looking at the general fund. We'll start out with an estimated beginning balance of $45,882,000. We have $5 million in funds that are not spendable or not available for our operations, and I'll go over the details in the next slide. We'll have receipts of $60,719,000, other financing sources of $1.5 million, and the general fund will transfer $16,285,000 to other funds to either subsidize other operations or to subsidize the capital improvement plan. Our operating expenditures will be $48,249,000 for an available ending balance of $38,570,000. A few other funds that I wanted to mention on this slide. If you look down at the lower portion of the rows for the debt service fund, I just wanted to point out that the debt service expenditures for next year of $2.8 million will include about $514,000 for the police department renovation debt service. Another item I wanted to point out on this slide is the capital projects fund. We'll start out with $21,456,000. That includes the Boonshoff money in our estate tax fund, which we reserve for future years expenditures, $3 million each year. The $18,651,000 is that reserve. 2021 will be the eighth year of our using that Boonshoff contribution, and we are estimating it to last to mid-year 2028. Our receipts in the capital projects fund are $5,227,000. The $3,976,000 is a transfer from the general fund into the CIP fund. Our capital improvement expenditures are $11.9 million next year for an ending balance of $105,000. So that's a look at the total city overall. And I wanted to go over on the next slide the details of those non-spendable or funds that are set aside. First of all, we have prepaid workers' compensation for $250,000. We have assets held for resale that are non-spendable. 3701 Wilmington Pike is the old life touch house for $164,000. And we have Miami Valley Research Park properties for $2,457,000. We have a commitment for economic development, which includes an additional $500,000 for January 1st of 2021 to bring that total up to $1,263,000. And then we have additional gas tax assignment for capital improvements. We have additional gas tax revenue over our base of $1,873,000. We are going to spend $1 million in the 2021 program, leaving us with a assignment of $873,000.
Kelly, Mark.
Yes.
How does that reflect in what we told people when this gas tax happened that we would use that money for road improvements? What is a breakdown on what we would traditionally have used plus the gas tax amount?
Your Honor, that's basically an additional $1 million per year that we're spending in the essentially residential neighborhoods, and that is consistent with what we promised when the gas tax was passed. Then we have another approximately $1 million or so each year that we spend on resurfacing projects. That comes out of the gas tax revenue as well as our regular capital improvement program. So the 2021 $1 million specifically is for the additional gas tax money consistent with the policy we adopted.
Yeah.
Okay, Steve, the next slide will show our general policy for reserves. And we have discussed this each year, but the Government Finance Officers Association recommends municipalities maintain at least two months of operating expenditures as available unrestricted fund balance. Kettering, however, because we are more reliant on income tax revenues than property tax revenues, which is more of a volatile type of revenue, we have adopted a goal to maintain not less than 25% or three months of operating expenditures and transfers. So the next slide shows how we compare against that goal. This slide shows our available balance at the end of each year in our general fund. And the red portion of each year shows the minimum fund balance that we need in reserves based upon our level of expenditures. So you can see for 2020 and 21, we do have $25 million over the minimum for 2020 and $22 million over the minimum for 2021. Looking at our operating margin, our personnel, operating, capital outlay, and debt must be funded with operating revenues, and capital improvements may be funded with reserves. So the details for this calculation is on this slide. We are meeting those goals. For 2020 and 2021, we start out with revenues of our general fund of $64.4 million and $61.5 million. We'll subtract out our operating expenditures of personnel, operating, and capital equipment. We'll also subtract out our operating transfers to subsidize other operations such as streets, police pension, parks and recreation, DECE, special grants and programs, and debt service.
Kelly, I got a question for you here before you go. If we're cutting people, there are less people working in 2021 versus 2020, why is there a $4 million increase in payroll in personnel?
Yes, that's a very good question. What we have done is we have moved about $3 million in public safety payroll from the general fund to a special grants fund set up specifically for CARES Act funding and for FEMA funding. So we see our current year's personnel costs are unusually low in the general fund.
Oh, so if we didn't have, if we didn't have those funds, we'd be closer to that $39 million as proposed for 2021?
Exactly. And I do have a trend line slide later in the presentation that shows you what our personnel would have looked like without that CARES grant funding.
Well, I think when we budget stuff out, we ought to have an asterisk by that because it looks like we're saying we're having less people, but our payroll's higher in 2021 than 2020.
I was getting ready to suggest the same thing. That ought to be put noted so people see this and understand that.
What was the number? What was the 19 number? Just as a point of trend? I mean, you just
Yes, the 2019 personnel for the general fund was $37,429,000.
Thanks.
So I will make that change in the slide and make a footnote so it will just be transparent for what, what is happening there.
Perfect, thank you.
And then looking at the line with the first green arrow, that is our operating margin then. $1.6 million in 2020 and $927,000 in 2021. From there, we can subtract out our transfers to capital improvement fund, and we get our ending net profit loss of $1,078,000 in 2020 and a reduction in fund balance of $2.3 million for 2021. And the next slide just shows a trend of our operating margin, and this fluctuates based upon one-time items, the timing of equipment purchases, or economic development incentives. But I just wanted to put it here to make it clear that we did meet our operating margin target for 2020 and 2021. Moving to income tax revenues. Our 2020 estimate is now $49.2 million, and our budget is a 2.7% decrease to $47.9 million. In 2021, when we generated the estimate, we included a growth factor for withholdings of 2.5% increase, and withholdings are about 75% of our total revenues. We factored in another 1% increase for non-withholding receipts. However, because we also take into account specific employment changes that we know about, you are seeing a decrease for 2020 and 2021. This is due to, of course, the pandemic in 2020 and with synchrony and Wilmer Hale leaving mid-year 2020 and continuing into 2021.
Kelly, this is Tony. You, you figured in wage increases of 2.5%, 1%. And, and yet we know what we're doing with some of our employees just in Kettering. And I, I think I've already seen that there are some other cities that are, or counties that are going with no increase. What makes you think that the vast majority then of where we have withholding are gonna have increases?
Nancy, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, this is, this is Nancy. We have seen even in 2020 withholding bounce back a bit. The, the difficulty is that you have to factor in, you know, a couple of the, the large employer losses as well. But other withholding accounts do seem to be bouncing back and improving, and I think, you know, as you see the unemployment rate go down too, you know, we're, we're taking that into account. This is not an exact science, absolutely, as you know. And we just kind of use the best information that we have to look at this, and as you know, we monitor this and make adjustments as we need to throughout the year, too. So, you know, a bit of it will be, time will tell. But we, you know, we have seen some improvement in that particular category other than the, the very specific employers that we know have no longer located in Kettering.
Yeah, I, I was shocked with that November number because it looked like, what, September and October were both, you know, we were going, going south, and then boom, pops November. I know you're dealing with a lot of unknowns. So that's why I was curious about some of the thought process that went into establishing this income tax number for 2021.
I, I have a question, Nancy. If, if a significant number of residences decide to not take their RMDs this year and roll it over into next year, would that potentially have an impact on our income tax revenues? We have no idea how many people would do that, but is that normally a significant amount of money to our community?
If, if it's strictly oh, retirement benefits, Bruce, you know, it's not earned income, so required minimum distributions from investment accounts have basically no impact on City of Kettering income tax.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no more questions about income tax revenues, we'll move on to property tax revenues. For 2021, of course, we are going to see the impact of the latest Montgomery County reappraisal. This budget shows an increase of $469,000 for the general fund in 2021. Now, that's a 7% increase. Now, as you know, the state rejected the county's valuation proposal. So we will be learning more about what that new valuation will be for Kettering toward the end of this week. And we can get back with you on that. But just keep in mind that a percentage increase in the valuation does not necessarily correspond to the same percentage increase in our revenues. And then looking at other revenues, toward the bottom of this screen, we have the local government fund. That will be about $734,000 next year. Our court fines will be budgeted at $989,000. They were lower during 2021, but we're estimating closer to the million dollar mark for 2021. And then for the other revenues, which includes items such as permit fees and reimbursements and grants, you'll see the large spike in 2020, and this is largely due to the receipt of Bureau of Workers' Compensation rebates in the general fund. We also received a $500,000 edge grant for Tenneco. So that's in 2020. And then it comes back down to a normal level without these one-time receipts for 2021. Moving on to expenditures in the general fund, our total is $64,534,000. As is typical each year, about 49 to 50% of our total expenditures are related to public safety. So the police and the pension transfer is 26% next year. And then the fire expenditures are 23% next year. We'll also have transfers, obviously, to other funds. For the CIP fund, we have $3,976,000. Streets, 2.5 million. And for Parks and Recreation, $7.4 million.
Kelly, do those percentages, are they approximately the same as in previous years?
Yes, they are. It's very typical that public safety is about 50% and then transfers is usually between 20 and 25%, just depending upon the size of our capital improvement plan for the following year. Personnel notes. For 2021, I did mention that we have some staffing reductions budgeted, and I have, the following slide will go into more detail on that. But I did want to mention also that we do have an across-the-board pay increase of 0% for both organized and non-organized employees. Keep in mind that each 1% increase equates to about $470,000, including benefits.
That's for all employees, correct?
Correct. There are no changes to the per's employer or employee contribution limits. And the only change for health insurance is that we are budgeting a 10% increase to health insurance premiums. The staffing level decreases in the full-time equivalents are 14.8. These are across several different departments. We have the clerk of courts for one FTE. We have a half FTE in human resources due to a partial year vacancy. Planning and development has a reduction of one. The police department, two. The fire department, one. The volunteer office will have a partial year vacancy. For the streets division, we have four. For facilities, one. And several partial year vacancies in Parks and Recreation for 3.8. So that reduction of 14.8 FTE equates to a cost savings of about $1,462,000. In part-time employees, we also have a reduction of 19.8 FTE.
Ask a question.
Yes.
Kelly, either for you or maybe it's for Mark. On the, just out of curiosity on the police department, am I correct that we've been hearing that they have been understaffed and then now we're reducing two on top of that? Is that correct?
Yeah, Bill, what we're doing with the police department is right now, we're, we're several FTE below authorization just from attrition and folks leaving. And I think at the last workshop, I mentioned that we've recently hired some folks. There were four, four new patrol officers were sworn in on Monday. We're still down probably somewhere in the neighborhood of four to five patrol officers after hiring Right. those four. So what we're doing for the 2021 budget is running an assumption that at all times during 2021, we'll be down about two people. We know it will, it will rise above that at some point and possibly a little below at some point. But the budget is reflective of two vacancies throughout the whole year. In a different year, when we're not as worried about operating margin and the COVID experience, we would probably just budget it full staff. But both for police and fire in 2021, we're going to go ahead and capture some of those savings that we normally have. But we'll go ahead and capture them upfront as opposed to just realizing them throughout the budget year.
May I ask a follow-up question? If we're pushing in the balloon on that side, I assume we anticipate overtime increases on the other side?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily
Is there an offset between those two?
There certainly is, but I wouldn't There certainly is, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily anticipate that we're jacking overtime up by leaving these vacancies in. Overtime is reflective of our traditional number of vacancies. And we're still carrying that traditional number. Again, the only difference this year is we're going to go ahead and capture that savings upfront. Whereas normally, I'd come back to you in, say, October and say, we have underspending of X. Well, we're recognizing some of that underspending now by carrying these or not funding these vacancies at the start of the year.
Okay, thank you.
As far as service delivery and number of officers that we have, I suspect it's going to remain fairly consistent.
Okay, thank you.
So Mark, are you saying that in your calculation of these two less officers, you factored in the overtime in establishing two full-time values then?
Well, I I think what I'm saying, Your Honor, is that I don't think these two vacancies will have that big of an impact on our overtime. Because we normally have at least two vacancies in police and certainly in fire as well. So I don't know that it'll have a direct one-for-one impact in 2021. And I think just from normal attrition, we'll be fine. Again, there won't be a service reduction at all in these two departments based upon this, the way we're doing it in 2021.
Okay.
Mark, I got kind of the same question, I guess, on on Streets Division. You know, that's got to be one of our core services coming out of the Street Division. And is that the same way there with the four?
Yeah, we, in the Street Division, we already have these vacancies. And we've had these vacancies for a while in 2020. And we're going to carry a number of vacancies in 2021 as well. We, what we'll be doing there is in those situations where we need more folks, we'll revert back to our all-hands-on-deck process for things like snow removal. And we have almost 15, little more than 15 folks that are identified from other divisions that will roll into the Street Department for snow removal, for example. So we're running a little bit more of a risk in public service with that number. But after conversation with Dave and putting the budget together, we think again in that area, we'll be able to maintain service level. And again, I'll say, and probably should have said at the beginning, we're monitoring expenses and revenue a lot more constantly under our current economic and pandemic environment. And if we get to a situation where we can fill positions, we will. And if we get to a position where we have to stop filling or even reduce expenditures, we will. So 2021 will continue to be a very intensive look at our resources on a regular basis to make sure that we're, we're reflective of the current economic condition. But also, at the same time, aware of the service delivery issues that might be coming down the pike.
So it, there could be, I'll just use a number. There could be eight open spots right now in Streets. And with this new budget, it'll be four?
Yeah, we're currently budging, yeah, we're currently budgeting for four vacancies in 2021. I believe the number right now in 2020 is one or two positions higher than that. I'm sorry, in 2020. We have more vacancies in 2020 than we're, we're budgeting for in 2021.
Okay.
And looking at the part-time, full-time equivalents, then, we have a decrease of 19.8. And these are spread throughout the city. Certainly, the majority are in Parks and Recreation. But we also have part-time reductions in departments such as the Law Department and Finance. In total, the part-time FTE will generate a savings of about $653,700.
Mark, Mark, before we go on, I I just want to make sure. So if we would be comparing budgets from 17, 18, and 19, and 20, this is an unusual way you're calculating the staffing level because you would not have done this for police, fire, streets. You would have adjusted, I think you said, in October. So we shouldn't look at prior years. It's a little different for staffing levels this year or for next year.
Yes, certainly. Typically, I don't recommend to you the reduction of personnel unless there is a very specific reason. In this case, obviously, we have a reduction in personnel just to meet our operating margin and to put a budget that is reflective of where we think the, the revenues and expenditures are going to be for 2021. So, yeah, for example, we wouldn't budget for vacancies in the Fire Department or the Police Department normally. We normally have them, but we wouldn't budget for them. We would go ahead and, you know, have the money for those positions. In 2021, we're being a little more aggressive on what we're budgeting and not budgeting for in regards to personnel. So it will certainly create a different trend line for 2021 if you were to compare budgeted positions to budgeted positions in 2020 and 2019. If we stabilize again, then we'll come back to City Council and talk to you about what personnel will look like in later parts of 2021 or even 2022. And one thing I do want to make sure we discuss, and I think Kelly said it already, our budgets for some departments will include replacing some of these positions yet in 2020. So, for example, we have a number of vacancies in Parks and Recreation. As we roll back into regular Parks and Rec activities in 2021, we will start hiring people. So, for instance, we have a vacant business superintendent position right now. It's been vacant most of 2020. It will be vacant most of 2021. But we are in this budget, including funding for the replacement of that position in late 2021, based upon the budget we put together. So we'll still be doing some recruiting in 2021. It just won't be full-year recruitment for positions.
Mark, the, the estimated headcount for 2020 is 428.3. That's, that's in our book. And next year, it's down 14.8. What's, what's the actual full-time in 20, right now, against that 428?
Well, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the table in the budget document in the budget summary category, that's an estimate based upon where we are today. That's an estimate for 2020.
That is, that is actually the prior year's budgeted staffing level, not the current year's estimated.
So, Tony, we'll get you the actual headcount. I know HR tracks that, and they'll probably text it to me while we're meeting. But we'll get that to you.
Well, I think it would be a lot simpler if we, if we knew, you know, you're, you're budgeting for next year at 413.5. And when you budget, you're budgeting an operating expenditure and personnel cost against that number. But what is it going in, you know? Is it 4, 410, 409? Yeah.
We will get you that.
Okay.
We will get you that.
Steve, if you want to move on to the next slide, this is a trend of personnel expenditures per year. I did point out that we have that unusual reduction in 2020 of 3.3 million because we have reclassed public safety payroll from the general fund to the special grant fund for the CARES Act and the FEMA application. So since this made the line look skewed, I've redone the slide, and that's the next one, as if we did not reclass our expenditures for these grants. So this gives us a more accurate look at what we're actually, what it would have been had we not had the CARES Act money.
So are we to read this, Kelly, that we, we went up a percent in personnel expenses from 19 to 20 estimate?
Correct. 1% and then a 3% increase next year. Now, this is budget, you know, not estimate. And 1% of that 3.1% increase is due to the health insurance premium increase. So I also put a note on this slide in the lower left-hand corner. When we look budget to budget, the general fund's 2021 budget versus last year's budget is almost 1% less than last year's budget. And all funds together are 2.6% less than the 2020 budget. Moving on to the operating expenditures without personnel, we had a few non-recurring items. Most notably, in economic development, was the Kettering Medical Center loan forgiveness. That was 3.6 million, $3.6 million. And then we also had the Edge Grant for Tenneco at $500,000. In public safety, we have the police body worn camera project for $236,000. The bulletproof vests were 71 and a half, $71,500. And the police and the fire MDT replacements were $390,000. For 2021, we initially asked the departments to prepare proposals that were a 0% increase over the 2020 budget. But of course, as the year went on, we asked for additional reductions. In the general fund, our operating expenditures without personnel are $963,000 or 10% less than last year's budget. The Streets operating subsidy is 4.1% less than the budget last year. Parks and Recreation subsidy is 6.8% less than last year's budget. And we are maintaining a $300,000 subsidy for the Phrase Fund with no transfer from the general fund.
Hey, Mark, I I have a question on that, that, that item. Why do we say that? And we use the Phrase Fund to make up for any subsidy we would have taken from the general fund? You know what I'm saying? Like last year, that Phrase Fund went down a million dollars.
Right.
We didn't take anything out of the general fund, even though we budgeted $300,000. We do that every year, and then every year, we say, we haven't used the general fund in X amount of years. Well, last year, when we lost over a million dollars there, we took it out of the fund. We didn't take anything from the general fund.
Yeah, Tony, I think if I understand your question correctly, maybe I can just clarify this a bit. We are, we have an operating loss budget of $300,000. It's not a subsidy budget from the general fund of $300,000. So we, but that $300,000 is budgeted to come from the fund balance in the Phrase Fund. Many years ago, when we didn't have a balance in the Phrase Fund, we would have to take the money from the general fund. But for the last several years, we have not had to do that. So it's an actual, the $300,000 is a, is an operating loss inside that fund. It's not a subsidy from the general fund. Does that make it clear or make it muddier?
I just have always thought that, that line item's in there to, to budget for the possibility of the Phrase losing $300,000. And if they do, it would come out of the general fund to make up for it. And last year, you know, as we all know, the Phrase took in just about zero.
Yep.
And we spent a million, one or more. And it came out of the Phrase Fund is where those dollars came from. At least, at least that's the way I, I interpreted what happened.
Yeah. And, and that is what happened. It came out of the Phrase Fund, and that's what we're budgeting for in 2021 as well, is a $300,000 operating loss inside the fund that the fund will address. When the fund balance for that fund is no longer sufficient to cover losses, then we would have to include a transfer from the general fund.
Okay. So if 2021 is a repeat of 2020, then we're going to have to go into the general fund by a million dollars.
Yes, that, it's, the fund balance currently would not be able to satisfy a several-million-dollar loss, if you will. So, yeah, we would have to come back to City Council in what would look like a supplemental appropriation where we would increase the transfers from the general fund to the Phrase Fund. We're not budgeting for that for 2021, but if that were to happen, we'd come back in a supplemental process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The operating expenditure trend line is on this slide. And again, we have an anomaly in 2020 with the 3.6 million loan forgiveness. So I have redone the slide to show what it would have looked like without that one-time charge. And we're showing the 2020 operating expenditures very consistent with the past several years. And then the 2021 budget coming down by 13.6%. Going on to the capital outlay, we have $632,500 budgeted next year. A van for planning and development for $35,000. We have two marked SUVs for the police department at 80. A replacement sweeper for the Streets Division for $320,000. A one-time pickup for 60. A Streets Asphalt Tac Coat trailer for 15. Facilities utility pickup for $55,000. And three-staff sedan for $67,500. And these are all replacement items, not new items or additions to the fleet. Moving on to debt, at the end of 2020, we'll have approximately 20.
I have a question. When, when we, when these are replacement items, the old ones, do they just go, you know, to the deep sea somewhere? Or do we get any money back from those, from school programs, other people that want? What happens to them?
We have an auction, and it's online. So we do receive money every year.
Okay, thank you.
The debt outstanding at the end of this year will be about $27.2 million. The fire stations will be $11.8 million. And new for 2020 is our police department renovation debt. The balance will be $7.9 million. Parks and Recreation Improvement debt, $6.1 million. The court building of $1 million. And promissory notes for $400,000 with OPWC. We were approved up to $400,000 for the Ridgeway Road Bridge in OPWC loan dollars. But we will likely only need $100,000. For 2021, our debt service is going to be $2.8 million. I mentioned earlier that this will now include the police renovation debt service of $514,000. And it also includes about a million dollars for the fire station debt service, which is paid for with our EMS funds.
That's a 10%. So the, I really don't need to know the interest versus principal, but that budgeted debt service includes debt or principal and interest?
Correct.
Okay.
Capital Improvement Fund. Over two years, we'll be spending $32 million. This will be funded through, of course, debt of $8.5 million. And I mentioned most of that is the police department renovation debt. We'll have grant revenue of $7.4 million. This is coming largely for, from ODOT for the Citywide Signal Project, the Ridgeway Bridge Project, and the County Line Project. We'll have reimbursement revenue. A lot of this is coming from Beaver Creek for their portion of the County Line Project. But also from Centerville for the Hewitt Bike Path. One percent for the arts fund. This was twenty twenty expenditures for the artwork for Shant and Ridgeway Bridges. And the city will contribute fourteen point five million, with again, six million coming from the Boonshoff Fund for, over the two years, three million dollars for two years.
Kelly, how much money is in that arts fund? Do you have that?
Yes, we, you might remember, we did an advance to the fund for the artwork, to encumber the artwork for Ridgeway Bridge. And so we still have that advance in that fund. So at the end of this year, I mean, I will not be transferring additional funds until they have paid that off. So next year's transfer into that fund based on one percent will be a reduced amount, so they can pay off that advance.
So they don't have a pot of money?
Right.
Kelly, that encumbered money for the artwork was for Shant, was it not? Wasn't for Ridgway yet, was it?
Yes, it is for Ridgway as well. Because we have the artist, we have the artist under contract.
Right.
And we have engineering costs in twenty twenty. And we have, yes, the engineering costs and some of the construction was also encumbered in twenty twenty, even though it won't actually be spent until twenty twenty-one.
Thanks.
The next slide just shows each year's capital improvements by funding source. The red portion on each line is the debt expenditures. The blue portion would be debt, I'm sorry, grant expenditures. And then the green portion is the city's share of each year's expenditures. From two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen, the average is about eight point one million for the city's share. And that's about exactly where we have our budget for twenty twenty-one. We have the specific, some specific projects listed out for you on next year's program. The County Line Widening Project is a grant-funded project. Will get two point four million in grant funding, plus Beaver Creek reimbursement for its share. We have the annual asphalt program for a million. And then here is that additional program, what we call the Neighborhood Program, that's funded with additional gas tax revenues. The thoroughfare project for next year will be Hilton from Dorothy Lane to Cardington for a hundred and eighty. Curb Sidewalk and Drive Approach is in the Indianola Neighborhood for seven hundred fifty thousand. For Dorothy Lane, we have curbs from South Dixie to Wilmington Pike for three hundred fifty thousand. On Marshall Road, we have five hundred seventy-four thousand. The landscaping for the Shant Avenue Bridge is two hundred thousand. We'll be doing some state highway work for State Route eight thirty-five. That's a grant project for three hundred twenty thousand. Danube Court Bridge Rehab Design, this is a project that we've added since the workshop. We're going to be spending a hundred thousand for design work. This is actually going to be an ODOT-funded project in twenty twenty-four. We have one million six eighty-five for the Rosewood Arts Center with a grant of four hundred fifty thousand. And then I'm carrying over one hundred thirty-eight thousand from this year's budget for the police renovation to next year.
Where is the Far Hills fall within this?
Far Hills is actually a twenty twenty project because it is being encumbered and bid out this year. So the funding isn't in next year's budget.
Kelly?
Yes?
There may be limitations accounting-wise, but on the Rosewood Arts Center, and then you have grant in parentheses, and then you told us that that grant is four hundred and fifty, approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. From my layman's point of view, it seems like it would be more easier understood if you, within the brackets, put grant and then put how much the grant was.
Okay. That's not a problem. It, it is four hundred and fifty thousand, and I can revise the slide to show the amounts.
Yeah, just not for me, but if there's a grant, we ought to know what the grant is on all of them. I think the same thing would be true with County Line.
Correct. Yeah. We can do that.
Thank you.
And the next slide just documents what changes have been made to the CIP program since the workshop. We have added Shant Avenue Bridge Landscaping for two hundred. I mentioned the Danube Bridge Design for a hundred. And the Police Department renovation carryover for one thirty-eight. We've carried over three projects from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. That's the Smithville Project, Woodman, and the Fiber Enhancement. And then we've revised our estimate for the College Drive cul-de-sac by two hundred thousand. And that is all that I have for the presentation, unless we have additional questions.
I, I have one question. On personnel costs, Kelly or Mark, either one, the, the numbers that have been presented, those costs in twenty twenty-one reflect another year of what was negotiated two or three years ago, correct? With the, the increase from that negotiation?
Yeah, Bill, this, Mark, so with the union contracts, some of them end in, at the end of twenty twenty, and then some of them end in the early parts of twenty twenty-one. So the funding for those positions is consistent with their contracts.
Okay.
And then also consistent with carrying a zero percent for our non-union. So we've melded all of that into the budget numbers.
Yeah, the reason I asked is estimated number of personnel going down and limited number of people with increases that were negotiated. But yet the cost, and accepting that the, the health insurance is going up. And that was one percent, I think Kelly said. But beyond that, there's a two percent increase. Is that right?
That's correct. And in that slide, what we're doing, though, is comparing the next year's budget to the current year's actual expenditures. So it's not a budget-to-budget comparison.
Kelly, I think I'd refer to the, to that particular slide, which I don't have the page number now, but where we put the footnotes at the bottom to indicate that the general fund twenty-one twenty, twenty twenty-one budget versus the twenty twenty budget for personnel were actually down point eight percent. And in all funds, we're down two point six percent. So Bill, I, I think maybe that footnote addresses some of that comment and does the analysis on budget year to budget year versus what you see in the budget document, which is estimate to budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Kelly, thank you for doing this. Sorry, we have a lot of questions, but sometimes we're just not as familiar, and it takes a little bit of time for us to kind of settle in with it. So I know you and the department directors and Nancy and everybody put a lot of work in this. And I can tell you, we appreciate it, and I know our, excuse me, our residents appreciate it, so thank you for.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your Honor, at this point, do you need a couple-minute break, or would you like to jump into workshop?
Well, it's six-thirty. We have an hour. I don't know how much time you need, so you tell me.
We can afford a five-minute break if you'd like one. If not, we'll move right on.
Well, why don't we take a five-minute break? Because I want to get a drink.
I mean, a soda.
Mary, I assume that's fine, if we take a five-minute break for you two?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll see everybody in five minutes.
Hey, Mark? Mark?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I, I'm confused on that. You know that RMD question I asked?
Yeah.
Okay, you're an accountant. I, I, I get RMD, and hypothetically, let, let's say it's fifty thousand dollars. And out of that, they take out probably twenty thousand, whatever I tell them to. And then I pay state and local tax.
Oh. No, you don't pay local tax.
No, it's already, you already paid it.
Well, this is.
I'm sorry, Mark.
This is pre-tax.
You're right, Mr. Kleepas.
Okay, because it's, I got the form right here. Let me look. All right, you're right.
Well, we knew that.
Well, who's right? Am I right, or is Tony right?
Both of you.
I pay federal and I pay Ohio, but not local.
Well, we'd be happy to.
You already paid it, Bruce.
Not what?
You paid local tax back when you earned that money that you put into that.
Right, but not the federal and, and the state. Okay, that was my question. All right. Thank you. I was, I, I'm trying to help my city. Come on now.
Is that an old people's tax?
Well, it's, yeah. Yeah, yeah. If, if you have a, yes, the answer to your question, yes.
That takes effect at what, when you turn seventy or something?
Seventy, well, it depends on, for me, it was seventy-two. And I think for, they've changed it, it might be seventy-one and a half now. I don't know. It's around that.
It was recently changed.
Was it? Bill, what, what is it now, Bill?
I don't have the exact percentage, but I know it was ended a little bit.
What I'm watching is a lot, I, I thought, mine looks long.
Well, your picture is, but their sound is not.
Oh, cool.
I heard. I was up for a second, but.
You guys can keep talking. You're muted to the public. We're still missing a couple, so.
I guess Herb Street predicted it correctly, didn't he? Boy, he sure did.
He sure did. I'd like to know how many athletes actually tested. Did they say?
I will never find out.
Probably not.
That's going to be FERPA-protected forever.
Yeah. I think you're right.
When you're a twenty-nine-point underdog, you can find ways not to play.
Absolutely. And to keep Ohio State out of the Big Ten Championship.
Oh, yeah. Although they said they were going to change the rules.
Oh, yeah. Oh, are they really?
Yeah.
That rule.
Yeah, he said they, they can change it if they need to. My, my video will not start. Whoever, Mary, is Mary running it?
There you are, Bruce. You're live now.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, I got it.
That's good. We have Jackie and Rob will be ready to go. We have Rob, and we have Jackie. Your Honor, we're ready to go.
Let's go.
They're ready. And three, two, one.
Welcome back. This is our workshop session for December the eighth. We'll turn it over to Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I will immediately turn it over to Mr. Bergstresser to share screen. And we'll go through some of the agenda items tonight first. First, Your Honor, Steve will be taking items three, four, and five on the agenda tonight, and I will take the rest.
I'm sorry, what was that, Mark?
Steve will be taking items three, four, and five tonight, and I'll have the rest.
Dave?
One of our items tonight is a FEMA grant resolution. And that is for us to submit FEMA grant reimbursement for COVID-related expenditures. We actually are going to add or have two projects. As Kelly mentioned earlier in the budget workshop, the total of those two projects will come in somewhere less than two hundred thousand. It'll be a seventy-five, twenty-five split, so, for example, a hundred. It'll be a seventy-five, twenty-five split, so, for example, a hundred and fifty and fifty. We have already submitted or will be submitting project number one. Project two will come a little later. And it's mostly for supplies and labor that are reimbursable by FEMA, so tonight will give us the authority to submit those items. Also, tonight on the agenda, we have our personnel ordinance and first reading. The second reading will be next Tuesday on the fifteenth. And again, as mentioned, a zero percent across the board for non-unionized employees. We will also make some minimum wage adjustments, which simply means we have pay scales for part-time employees that are below minimum wage. So we'll remove those pay scales since minimum wage changed during the last period that we have adopted disordinance. And then we've also split out the pay grades for battalion chiefs and captains just really to make it a more usable document for us. And that's really the personnel ordinance. Those are the significant changes that I'll mention during the reading of the ordinance tonight. The mayor had asked me earlier this week about the income tax numbers, and Kelly kind of went over them in the presentation. But this slide clearly shows you where we are today through November compared to the three projections that we've had this year for 2020. So originally, we were at fifty-two million, too. We'd be one point three million under that projection. Then we went to fifty point six. We'd be about break even. And the budget document you just reviewed has us at forty-nine, too. And we're about one point two million dollars over. I will caution, as I always do, with income tax, we still have some time left. We'll have not only December's numbers, but due to the accrual, we also have January. So we have about sixty days worth of numbers left that will go into that revision number two on your screen. Kelly also mentioned this evening the county auditor situation, and I just want to give a quick recap of that. We had the countywide property reappraisals done over the last couple of years. And in July of 2020, Carl Peace Office submitted those to the state. Those tentative values showed a seven percent increase countywide. And in Kettering, we had a nine point two one percent gain in value. And that roughly equated to the four hundred and seventy thousand that Kelly showed you as an increase for 2021. The Auditor's Office has now told us that the state rejected their seven percent proposal. And they came back with an eighteen percent countywide adjustment in August of this year. From August until now, the Auditor's Office has been working with the state, and they've reached a settlement of a fifteen percent countywide value increase. What we don't know is what's the percentage for Kettering? The Auditor's Office is having a call on Thursday with the finance departments from all the jurisdictions. We're hopeful that in that meeting, we'll receive our percentage, or shortly thereafter, we'll receive our percentage. And hopefully, I'll be able to present that to you on Tuesday, next Tuesday's workshop.
Mark, what was the county percentage increase before the courts and everybody got in, before the state rejected it and everything?
Countywide, it was seven percent, and ours was nine point two one.
Well, what what's the fifteen percent, or what did you just talk about?
The fifteen percent is where the state and the county have settled. So on Thursday, we'll receive the breakdown of that fifteen percent increase by jurisdiction. That's my hope. That's normally what happens. I'm not having direct conversation with Carl.
All right, I'm a little confused in that we were nine percent. Correct?
That's correct.
What was the total that it went up? I mean, this fifteen percent is going to be divided somehow among all entities within Montgomery County, correct?
That's right, and that percentage previously was seven percent. So the seven percent countywide has grown to fifteen percent countywide.
So our taxes are going to go up higher than what we received originally?
That is our expectation, just not confirmed yet. You know, it is possible that our value stayed at nine percent, and everybody else is one up exponentially. What's more likely is our volumes, our our values will go up somewhere close to that fifteen percent number. It's important to note that back in July, when we received the nine percent, we received the highest value increase in the county. So I don't expect ours to go all the way to fifteen, because we were already quite high, but I just don't know. We'll find out on Thursday. We'll find out hopefully on Thursday.
So our resident and the residents across the county can expect a dramatic increase over and above the estimate they sent us?
Yeah, that's that's correct. So and Carl mentioned that due to the timing of all this, the residents will receive essentially their bill in January, and that'll probably be the first time they know exactly how much the dollar increases. They might receive a percentage increase in their value prior to their tax bill. But their tax bill is when they'll find out exactly what it means to them in dollars. And that, as you know, comes out in January.
Mark, I thought our taxes, our property taxes, were paid in arrears. Am I? Would would all this be impacting everybody in 2021, or would only half of it?
Yeah, it's my understanding it'll be an impact in 2021. Though, while the values are just now being set, I think the effective date of the values is early 2020.
Oh, it is. They can move it way
I believe that's correct, Bruce.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know. I didn't know when the effective date took place, because I know we pay them six months in arrears, so, okay.
Why did the state reject this? I mean, what's the rationale?
Well, they rejected the majority of the counties this year, which is unusual. I think Carl said there were like forty-one counties that went through the reappraisal, and twenty-five of them, the state rejected. And we'll find out more on Thursday, but my understanding is one of the major components is the state only looked at the previous year's transactions for sales. Whereas the county typically uses an average of a number of years. And as you know, the housing market boomed in 2020, nineteen, and 2020.
Does this affect commercial property as well?
It does.
Sorry, Don.
Hell, my taxes went up a ton with Carl's original thing. I can't imagine what it's going to happen now.
It's going to be grim. I know. We're going to get a lot of complaints. Mark, will the county will have, they'll staff people appropriately when these bills come out, and they'll be able to talk to people. We'll have somebody in our office that can refer them directly to the county?
Yeah, it's be the same process we always have, Bruce. If we get calls, we refer them directly to the county office and phone number that they need to call. And Carl indicated as well that there will be the ability of residents to dispute the value and appeal their value.
Okay, good. Thanks.
All right, Steve, next slide. So the Christmas tree lighting went off without a hitch.
Yeah.
It was a great virtual a great virtual event, and the lights looked great. And we're still working on the sound. We received some complaints over the weekend, and again today, the music is on a timer, and it's supposed to run most of the day, but not all the way through the night. And what we've determined is the timer's not working, and the music was running twenty-four seven. So as of about three o'clock, we still weren't satisfied that we had the timer fixed completely. So I believe at this point, there's no music, so that we make sure it doesn't run all night. And we're hopeful that we'll have the timers repaired and ready to go sometime tomorrow. So we've received a few complaints. We've certainly apologized and talked to some folks, and we'll try to get that fixed. The timers are basically set to run really from first thing in the morning around six, six-thirty to about ten thirty at night. And that captures everybody from the early morning walkers through the park to the folks that come out at night. And it's kind of like a drive-through right now. If you drive Lincoln Park, drive slowly and carefully, because a lot of our residents are driving through Lincoln Park with the windows down to look at the lights and hear the music. Steve, I'll turn it over to you, and you give a brief update on Ridgeway Bridge.
All right, thanks, Mark. Good night, or good evening, everyone. Ridgeway Bridge Project has started. They are working on demolishing the bridge as we speak, or actually as we speak, but they started during the daytime doing it. Their overriding goal is to have the bridge demolished by Christmas. And in order to do that, they're looking at potentially some weekend work, which would involve closing Dorothy Lane between Southern Boulevard and Farnhill Avenue. And using Southern Boulevard, West Stroup Road, and Farnhills as a detour for both directions of Dorothy around the Bridge Project. We don't have exact dates or times yet when that will happen, but we can expect that work to occur sometime within the next two and a half weeks or so, so it is down before Christmas. That's their goal right now. So once we have some dates confirmed, we'll get information out to council and certainly out to the residents both in the project area and to the larger community as well, since there's a large number of cars that use Dorothy Lane on a daily basis. If we, when we close Dorothy Lane, it will be during an overnight and weekend period when we do that. It will not be during a weekday when it will be closed. So that is the update for this. If not later this week, we'll definitely have more update for you at your next meeting workshop a week from tonight.
All right, thanks, Steve. Just a quick update on some of our COVID-19. Currently today, we have six positive cases, nineteen employees with symptoms, so off work because of the symptoms, and six employees that have been quarantined due to exposure. That number's a little higher than last week. We were around the twenty-two to twenty-five number. And as you can see, we've creeped up to about thirty at this point. Also, on the next slide, Steve, the CDC did issue new guidelines in regards to exposure and how long you need to be quarantined. And right now, it's fourteen days. So if you're exposed, an employee would stay home for fourteen days. The CDC has said, well, we still recommend fourteen days. But if during your quarantine, you have no symptoms, and that lasts for ten days, you come back to work on the eleventh day. And then they also said you could get a test to prove that you're negative, and you could only be out a minimum of seven days. So we reviewed that internally, and what we're going to do is follow the ten-day solution. Our protocols currently are not test-based, so we don't require employees to get tests to come back to work or to prove that they need to be off work. But because we don't have test-based protocols now, I didn't really want to have test-based protocols in regards to that minimum of seven days. And frankly, I think it'd be almost impossible to be to be off just seven days, because your test could only be two days prior to the seven days. And by the time you get the test results back, given the current delays in test results, you're going to be off ten days. So we're going to allow the ten-day solution from the new CDC guidelines. And then we do have police and fire working with public health in regards to vaccine distribution, when that might occur, and how that would occur for public safety personnel. So we're staying up, staying in touch with public health and up to date on that. And you know, that could start as early as next week, or it could be sometime in January. We're just we're just monitoring the situation, and we'll be ready when the time comes.
Hey, Mark?
Yes, sir.
It's it's way down the road. As a public employer, do you envision certain classifications of employees being required to get the vaccine, or is that too far out in the future?
Well, it's it's kind of too far out in the future, and what I do anticipate is the priority will continue to be public safety and healthcare workers and healthcare workers in the congregate setting, and then the congregate setting, and then it'll just keep working its way down to, you know, the everyday citizen, if you will. So as far as mandating whether an employee takes this, I don't see that coming, but it could. To give you an example, on a call last week, Wright-Patterson Air Force indicated that because the vaccines are being approved in the emergency stage, even Wright-Patterson Air Force Base will not be able to force the receipt of the vaccination. So but, you know, all things can change in COVID, right? So we'll keep monitoring and plan accordingly.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Mark, there hasn't been any indication to anybody that, you know, the refrigeration requirement for this stuff. We don't have that capacity, I don't think. Our fire stations don't have it. Have you heard anything where, you know, they're saying CVS and all these folks are going to have, be able to vaccinate you? They got to have the equipment to do it, and they're about fifteen thousand dollars a pop for a refrigerator. Do you think we'll be into that down the road, or you have any clues yet? I mean, we'd have to budget and plan for it, I would think.
Yeah.
C C had a thing today or at the the White House, and they identified the various packaging of how it was going to come and how it was going to be sent, whether it's a dry-iced one or whatever it is. But there are containers that contain, I can't remember, a hundred shots, including needles, swabs, sterilization things, and everything else. And then I think it's Moderna is the one that is tied in with CBS and Walgreens. They will actually, as they did on some of the others, they will actually go out like to the nursing homes and things with those boxes and administer those
Dry ice packs, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Don. Thanks, Don.
But both vaccines don't require the extreme cold.
Just the Pfizer one is ninety-four below. The others aren't quite as bad, and they have a longer shelf life, the other ones.
So Right.
I think the Moderna one's going to be more popular for the drug, as Don said, for the drugstore.
So too, yeah.
Hospitals will probably get the Pfizer, because they they have the capacity to do it. Yeah.
Steve, if you'd go ahead to the next slide? Yes, Tony?
I I was asking a question on income tax, but I was muted, so all there might have seemed was a but I my question was going to be, are you anticipating any amounts of refunds being requested in the first quarter from those folks that were, you know, employees of Kettering businesses that were working from home? Did anything change yet from the state or federal on, you know, the the withholding of the the taxes?
Well, you have two questions there. Do I anticipate receiving refunds? Yes. Do I anticipate denying refunds? Yes. The state law is still the same, that you continue to pay based upon your regular workplace, even if you went home to work during COVID. So we would not approve those refunds for that at this point, because the state law has not changed yet.
Nothing's changed.
Yeah. Just one more, a couple of quick more updates before we go into executive session. Our Wellness Committee and Health and Health and Wellness Committee received the Healthy Worksite Gold Award from the Healthy Business Council of Ohio. This is for our our worksite promotion of health programs and our wellness programs. And this year, it also took into account the technology we're using and our response to COVID-19. So very happy to report that we received the gold award. We have a long history of receiving different levels of this award, whether it be silver, gold, or bronze. And this year, we received the gold award, so kudos to our HR department and our Wellness Committee for that.
Does that translate to better or knockoff on some of our health insurance? Does that translate to better or knockoff on some of our health insurance rates?
A thirty percent reduction, I would hope, but no, I'm not aware that we'll get a reduction based upon that. Where the Health and Wellness Program works for us is internally in reduction of our claims by having a healthier workforce. But the award doesn't necessarily knock to it.
No, no, I know the award didn't, but I meant our effort, yeah.
I'm sorry, Bill, I misunderstood your question. Yeah, we still are big proponents of our Wellness Program because of the increased health of our employees who participate in the program.
Okay.
Our leaf pickup is in District Four. I'll cover that tonight in the community update. We should be completed, not necessarily this week, but next week with the leaf pickup program. I promised you a copy of the MVCC budget. I talked to Jay this week. The budget's being approved by the board at MVCC on Wednesday of next week. So once that's done, and I know it's their final budget, I'll shoot you all a copy of that budget. Friday is the Washington Township Firefighters Funeral, and we are exercising mutual aid. And we'll be assisting Washington Township, as will a number of other departments, in covering their fire stations during the funeral on Friday. And with that, Your Honor, I am ready for executive session.
Mark, you didn't ask us, does anybody have a question on the agenda?
Tony, you're right. Does anybody have a question on the agenda?
Mark, I got a question on the agenda. On number, number six, the five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Economic development. What, you know, I'm sure you're ready for it. You know offhand what our balance is and that, and
It's a little over one point two million after that five hundred thousand is that.
Oh, is that right? So it's at point seven now, then, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Is there a motion to enter into executive session under Section 121.06K of the Codified Ordinances for the purposes of property matters, labor negotiations, economic development, and negotiation with organizations or individuals?
No move.
Okay, we'll take a roll call. Mr. Kleipas?
He's muted.
Yes.
Lauder?
Yes.
Purdue?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We are in executive session.